Good evening, Littleton. Welcome to the Select Board meeting for September 8th. We'll get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we'll go through some mail. We've got department and board updates with a presentation from the town clerk to approve the town election warrant. We'll have public input and members updates, then we'll move on to a joint meeting with the Conservation Commission and followed by Select Board discussions on office hours and use of common, of the common rather, and the flagpole and flag. Town administrator update minutes, and then we're out of here. Eight thirty-five. Let's get started with the mail, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've got some vacancies within the community. We've got vacancies that are appointed by the Select Board, Agricultural Commission Committee for the Exploration of Real Estate Tax Relief for Seniors, Conservation Commission, Disability Commission, Economic Development Committee, Littleton Community Television Advisory Committee, Master Plan Implementation Committee, Permanent Municipal Building Committee, Personal Advisory Committee, Sustainability Committee, Zoning Board of Appeals. We have one appointment by the School Committee, there's availability in the Finance Committee, and an appointment by Littleton Electric Light and Water Department. Also on that Finance Committee, there is one opening. Sign up to receive public notifications for the town of Littleton. Scan the QR code on the screen to register or go to www.littletonma.org/subscribe. Community impacts, public safety activity, transportation issues, town meeting changes, public health concerns, town events, stay informed. Here we, the Select Board has received a letter from the First Baptist Church requesting, letting the Select Board know that the congregation is unfortunately looking to relinquish ownership of the building and would like to see if there was interest within the Select Board, and that is going to be continued with the Select Board. We have a decision here from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Alcohol Beverage Control Commission, Tavern in the Square, and the conclusion based on the evidence, Commission finds that the licensee violated, violated 204 CMR, 2.05, open parentheses, two, closed parentheses, permitting and illegality on the license premise to wit Mass General Law Chapter 138, Subsection 4, sale or delivery of an alcoholic beverage to a person under the 21 years of age. As a result, the Commission has issued a warning. Here we've got a letter from the National Grid sent out regarding scheduled 2024 herbicide treatments for rights of way, which passed the municipality as part of the 2025 yearly operational plan, list the transmission lines that were treated in 2024 in the event that we need, they need to follow up with treatment in 2025. National Grid field reviewed the 2024 rows and found sites in Littleton that require a follow-up treatment. Therefore, National Grid needs to perform selective treatment on the, on the sites this year. The following rules will be treated. The VMP 2024 and 2025 YOP and MAPs are posted at the following website. Okay, there we have, okay, here we have a choice for life with good neighbors after 55. Hager Homestead, looking for a vibrant supportive place to call home. First senior cohousing community of caring neighbors. Come to an info session in Tor on Sunday, September 14th from four to six p.m. over at the library at 30, at River Hall Library Sturt's Room, 35 Shattuck Street in Littleton. And that's it.
Good evening, thank you, town clerk. I'm here this evening to ask the Select Board to approve the election warrant for November 1st for our special election. It is before you, and that's what I'm asking for.
Does anybody have any questions?
Julie B. Clerk.
Move the Select Board vote to approve and sign the election warrant for the November 1st, 2025 election.
Second.
Moved by Mark, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor?
Aye.
And just to let you know, we do have our new election ballot machines.
And?
They came in today.
How are they?
What do we think?
They're awesome.
Are you going to do early, what are you doing for early voting and mail-in for the election?
So anybody that signed up in January and February, we are putting all of the postcards in now. So if anybody did sign up earlier this year, we are putting them in now. So they should be getting notification and we will, as soon as the ballots come back, come to us, we will be sending them out to all of those people. There was about 2,000 people that actually signed up in the spring, so they're all sad. But anybody that has any questions, they can give us a call, and we'll be happy to let them know if they are on the list.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Public input and members' updates. I'll say that if anybody has public input regarding the joint meeting with the Conservation Commission, let's take questions about that after we've had that discussion. If anybody has anything else that they'd like to speak on, please go ahead.
Rob Brown, 25, Junior Road. I want to thank you folks for holding joint meeting last week with regard to the Shaker Lane School project. We're really hoping that you'll all really be advocates for the project so we don't pay twice for what needs to be done. The second item that I'd like to bring to your attention, because it was just, I was reminded of it yesterday, is that I've heard firsthand accounts now from two separate people with regard to accidents. I apologize, I don't know the timeframe, but really terrifying, one identified yesterday as a life-threatening accident directly is somebody was exiting out of the, the road from Shaker Lane School into Goldsmith and T-boned somebody, and you know, his wife almost died. So I don't know the timeframe, but that reminded me, and at the time, I had only known of one, but somebody in a different community information session after speaking came up to me and said, "By the way, we got totaled." And so I've got two people that live within a very proximate area of Shaker Lane that I've just kind of come into awareness, and I've only been there a few years, so it's before my time. But it really brings out to me my experience that I'm now walking granddaughter back, or granddaughters back and forth, and I can tell you that my experience may not be indicative of others and the normal, but it's almost every other time that I'm walking that the speeding coming right at the crosswalk that I'm crossing Goldsmith, I'm literally, like my four-year-old granddaughter is letting her friend know, wait till Gramps goes out into the crosswalks and stops the traffic. And I am now basically going out there to basically stare down and just put my body there, and people are having to hit the brakes hard. It's not, this isn't a rolling 25 or 30. They're hitting the brakes hard, or, as my wife and I experienced, the person just blew by me and was going 45, 50, easy. So it's a concern, just wanted to bring it to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
We should probably investigate if there's a better way of stacking cars than on Goldsmith Street. When you go there, when Shaker Lane lets out, it's, it becomes a one-lane road and it's very hard to get through. So I don't know if the police highway school should look at some alternative or where to move cars so that they're not stacked there.
I can talk to the chief about it.
And for the safety, there are now the RFB, RFBs there, so that hopefully will help.
Anybody else? Okay, for now. Mark, you want to start with member updates?
Sure.
Oh, wait, are we doing, yeah, we are, okay.
Last week, I walked the property behind the library across Hager to Castle in the Trees to exploring, putting a trail back there. It's going to require some permits from Conservation and Boardwalks, so it'd be very exciting to have that access to Castle without, basically you could then go from the school to Castle in the Trees without going on any roads.
That's great.
So that's a great thing to move forward. Yesterday, I went to John Borowski's retirement party over at the VFW. It was very well-attended, good cake, so thank you to the friends for organizing it and everyone, and for John for his many years of service to the town. The Littleton Road Race is coming up on Sunday, the 20, September 21st. Still time to sign up to run or volunteer. Expect to see you out there running Chase and being one of the first finishers again. And also, I want to remind everyone the senior luncheons tomorrow for the police and over the fire station.
That starts at 11:00, I think, right?
At 11:00 or 12:00? 12:00.
Yesterday, Chairwoman Morrison and I attended the swearing-in of the new lieutenants at the Fire Department. It's always nice to see them promoting from within. And on Thursday, Chairwoman Morrison and I toured the orchard with Emily Schrader, who is a, she works for West and I believe as a conservation agent, but she's, her, her side hustle, her, her other job is to monitor conservation restrictions. And we are probably going to employ her to write a report on the orchard, on the APR, and do a baseline survey, not a survey, but a baseline set of the condition of the property to begin with, and then annually a report on what has happened on the orchard that year to make sure that we are adhering to the maintenance plan that we have with John Bransfield. And John and Emily got along great. She's really nice. I have a good feeling that she's going to do, do right.
Is that going to include having her come and talk to us?
Yes, and so we are, we are going to do a public meeting. I don't know what, what exact form it will take, but the idea is to have John there to present what he's done for the last year, to have Emily discuss the state of it, answer questions, and then we can get feedback from the public about, you know, are there concerns? Are there things that are said here that you want to monitor for the next year? And we can add those into the report for the next year and sort of tailor the monitoring of the orchard as we go. And then I was really sorry to hear that Marge Payne passed away. It was sort of, I think, a terrible loss for Littleton. I met her when I was running for this seat during COVID and attended some COA Zoom meetings, and she was brilliant and very thoughtful, and boy, she could run a meeting. She was great at it. And then I think right after, right after I was elected, I was sort of feeling intimidated and like I didn't have any friends. She was so warm and generous, welcoming me to the COA meetings. She had an incredibly polite way of telling me I was wrong, which I loved. And, you know, I came to realize that she treated everybody that way. She stood up for the things she believed in. She was firm, she was polite, she always listened. And I know that, we all know, she worked really hard to make the Senior Center a reality. And, you know, but she worked for affordable housing and building a community in Littleton, and I, I'm going to miss her. She was great, and Littleton is, you know, poorer, poorer without her, unfortunately. And I just also want to express my condolences to her family because I really liked her. And that's all I got.
Echoing a lot of sentiments already expressed, so I was also at John Borowski's retirement open house. I missed the cake, unfortunately, but I had some delicious cookies. And many thanks to John. And I was at the swearing-in, so again, congratulations to Lieutenant Tyson David and Lieutenant Sean Foster. And of course, it's, we are all at a loss, I think, you know, because of Marge. It's, I'm so glad that she got to see the Senior Center become a reality, but any day would have been too soon to lose Marge.
Agreed.
I attended the MAPC Magic Meeting last week. Cooper was there as well. It was fine. I met with Steve Moore regarding capital projects for, one of our goals regard, was to try to get a better grip on our involvement with capital projects, major capital buildings. And so I talked to him a little bit about PMBC and their process to get, kick that off. More to come on that. The Sustainability Committee, I attended that meeting towards the tail end. They approved a climate emergency declaration that they'll be bringing to us and to town meeting and onto the warrant. They are hoping we'll be meeting with them in a couple of weeks to discuss it.
Great.
They also voted to endorse the Shaker Lane Building Project, which was great to see, so thank you to them for that. Recorded a podcast with Jonathan Bransfield, very informative. I think Jim and I both learned more in, you know, 20, 30 minutes than we would have over two lifetimes, at least. So I would encourage anybody with an interest in the orchard and to, who wants to know what's happening with the orchard now, to, to check out the podcast. You can find it by searching for 01460 wherever you search for podcasts or on the LCTV website. We also recorded podcasts with Michelle Kane and Henry LaFontaine, Mary Lee Mercy from Studio G, and Jim regarding Shaker Lane. Those are two separate episodes regarding, the first is regarding why the current building is inadequate, the second is regarding why the new building will meet our needs. And so I would encourage anybody with an interest in either of those topics to check it out. And that's all I had. Is the Conservation Commission ready?
Oh, we can be, ma'am, we're
Ten minutes early.
Posted for seven. We have our meeting posted, just in case we have a farm. We don't actually need a farm. We don't propose to take any votes. So if you'd like to wait, we can wait, or we can take it off-town. It's not a public hearing. I mean, why don't we just start now?
Let's go ahead and get started.
Chase Kirbig, Chair of the Conservation Commission, Mike Livingston, also in the Conservation Commission, and Tim Pearson, Conservation Agent. We're here to talk to you tonight about essentially starting a process to figure out what we're going to do with some conservation land that is shown here. So let me describe a little bit of the nature of the, the challenge that we're working with. This piece of conservation land is between the road and the lake. And currently, there are something like four docks or five docks. There are a number of kayaks that are stored there. Generally, it's maintained to some degree in some areas, presumably by the people that live across the street. But what has come to our attention, we've received some complaints. Some folks are concerned that this is townland and the docks and the use of it essentially suggests that it's private property. And the complaints have ranged from people being told to get off docks to people being told to not trespass on that land. And also some concerns about the sort of aggregation of additional kayaks and boats and so on. And so what the Conservation Commission is proposing to do is essentially undertake a process to figure out what's the right and fair way to sort of manage this. Because it's been like this for a long time, right? And I wouldn't suggest that anyone has done anything on Tor, right? But the reality is that I think our perception is that there is a certain amount of inequity in terms of how it's handled. Who, who gets to put a dock there? Who gets to use that land? How is that land used for access to the lake? How is it maintained to ensure the protection of our resources and recreation and so on? And so we wanted to come to you tonight to lay out sort of the challenge that we see in front of us, also to read you into it, because if, we'll go to the, the next slide here. You can see, this is the, the lake as a whole, and this matches the figures you all have in front of you. I want you to pay particular attention to the yellow pieces of property. Those are the pieces of property that are controlled by the Select Board. And interestingly enough, the Select Board controls sort of to the south of the beach along Queen Road or at the end of Queen Road. The Select Board presumably also controls, there are a couple of paper streets that terminate at the lake. The, the one in particular along Lake Road terminates, and frankly, you have a similar problem there in that there are private property owners, I think, unless you guys have authorized it, who have put a gate across it to prohibit people from accessing the lake. So essentially, what we're getting to is a point where we need to come up with what the right approach is to manage this. And I, I would argue that doing nothing is an option. I wouldn't say it's a great option, but it's certainly an option. But what we would propose to do, and we want to make sure you're read into this, is undertake a series of public hearings, gather input from the community, gather input from community associations, and to weigh what the right choices are here. I would expect we would also engage with Parks and Rec. There's a substantial recreation component of this, and we'd like to engage with you in that process as well, to essentially answer the fundamental question of what is the, the fair and best use of that property. If we were to decide, and to be clear, the, the range of options is everything from do nothing to, to frankly, asking people, telling people, or just doing it because it's technically, it's on the town's land, removing the docks entirely. And I think anything within that continuum is on the table. And what we need to do is figure out what does the community need and want, what are the, what are sort of the legal implications of those things? What is the appropriate thing to do from the conservation of the resource? And in general, how do, how do we manage this fairly? So if you take a look at the, the next slide, we're not actually talking about conservation, this is a table shows the amount of shoreline. What I wanted to point out to you here is you, we're looking at, this particular parcel is 2,700 feet long. You control about 500 feet in addition to that 2,700 feet. And what I would suggest to you is it would make a lot of sense for us to, to do this together in concert with one another. Despite the number of docks that you see along the lake, there are actually only six parcels of land that are privately owned outside of Proudie. Only six parcels of land that actually have direct lake access. And one of those is on the inlet side, and it's all marsh, so functionally, it's five. And so we need to figure out sort of how to manage the public side. But I will tell you, it's not our intention outside of Chapter 91 licensing, which is a state program to get a license to put a dock on a great pond. It's not our intention to sort of make this policy specific to the private properties. We're trying to figure out what the equitable use is of the, the town pieces of property. So the, the point of coming in tonight is to make sure it's on your radar, to make sure it's on the community's radar, and then we're going to begin a process to sort of try and sort this out. One of the pieces of information, or one of the things I'm looking for from you all is your thoughts on what you would like to see in that process. We certainly have thoughts in terms of public hearings and so on, but if, if you have particular thoughts either now or later, we do think this is, it's going to be challenging for folks. And particularly the folks who have docks there, who, I think they have docks there. This is going to frustrate them, and I think, but it's also frustrating other members of the community who feel like they don't have access to that. So we need to find a path forward.
Tom Harrington, thanks for being on, thanks for being here. Appreciate that very much. Tom Harrington, our counsel, is also on the line, joining us for this discussion as well. I would agree, but it's best for us to work together on this, whatever, whatever that solution is that we get to, I think it's best if it's applicable to all the public lands along the lake. That would be my, my first thought. I think public input is going to be crucial. I agree with you on that, too, for sure. So those are my very initial impressions.
I have some questions. Is there a conservation restriction along the 2,700 feet, or is it only under your control because it is in, under the Wetland Protections Act?
I don't believe there's a conservation restriction on it. It's simply under our care, custody, and control.
Okay, so it's effectively treated the same as, as if there was a CR, or close to it?
Yeah, we treat it the same way. It certainly gives us a little more flexibility. So I talked about the range of options, but I think in between are some options where we say, we do want, maybe we'll work with Parks and Rec and say, we do want a couple of docks there for people to fish off of, and that's a little bit easier to do without the CR on it.
That's fine.
But we're functionally treating it the same way.
How long have these docks been illegal?
I mean,
Years and years?
Years, right. And that, that, that's one of the things that I wanted to make clear. I don't think anyone has
Yeah, yeah.
done anything on Tor. It, it's just come to a point where the inequities of it are coming to the surface, and we need to solve them.
Is the concern primarily the sort of issues with equity, or is it that there's actually damage being done to the shore or the lake or, you know, the environment?
I, I think it's primarily answering questions like, if, if that's town, the equity side of it primarily, I'll touch on the other side in a second, but it, it's very, very hard to tell someone that they can't put a dock in when there's already a dock there. They say, well, it's townland. I want to put a dock in, too, regardless of where they live. That, that, I think rightly to people, rings very hollow, rings unfairly. I do think there are some concerns about, if, if we have a place where too many people are getting in the water consistently and we start to sort of degrade the shoreline,
Yeah, okay.
we can have problems around that. I would say those are more minor in comparison and relatively easy to restore if it is a problem.
And then my last one is, I wasn't, I, I just didn't quite understand the private property versus town-owned. So are you saying that whatever we do will not cover the private prop, the five parcels that are private?
That's our intention right now. Those parcels can get docks. We, we are working through a process. Most of the docks in Littleton are not appropriately licensed with the state. Tim and Lauren are working through a process with dock owners on private pieces of property to get those licensed. It is not a super time-critical thing, so we're working through them bit by bit. That would be the only thing that, you know, and appropriately permitted, but this policy wouldn't cover those privately owned parcels that have access.
But there's a state statute that covers those.
Right, and there's a Conservation Commission input on those that's separate from this.
Got it. Okay, thank you. That, those are all my questions.
So how do you see this process going forward? I mean, are you planning to run this through the Conscom meetings? Because it seems like this could derail your normal set of business, or do you want to create like a subcommittee between us, Park and Rec, and you to kind of drive this until we're ready to bring it back to the regular meetings, or?
Our proposal right now is to run these hearings, at least, let's say, the initial stages of them, as hearings to the Conservation Commission, meaning what we are really only talking about right now is, especially conservation, is just that spit of land between the road and the lake. I do think there's value in understanding, particularly where you all want to go with the portions of the land that you control. I think Park and Rec's input is important. I'm not sure how that all fits together. But right now, we're proposing conservation first.
It seems like we should have a holistic solution and come up with something to get, I mean, the land that we control versus that you control is more semantics than anything else.
I would agree. I don't think the community cares about the distinction between those two things.
And most people don't even know which one's which, probably, so. So having, having them have different policies is not a, a good thing. But I, I'm, I was just worried that your meetings could be overwhelmed by this potentially, if you have other business, if you wanted to take it more as an offline.
Right now, what I would propose is that we have a hearing and see how it turns out. I do, I, I don't think it's an urgent thing, but I do think it will require diligent action. I mean, when I walked this area yesterday, there are docks on private land with signs that say, private, private. that say, "Private property, keep out." Like, we really have to...
On public land.
Sorry. Yes, there are docks on public land that say, "Private property, keep out."
And if, and if we, I mean, I, what is the process if we want, if we're more or less delegating them to the Conservation Commission to come up with a plan that we're following? Do we have to delegate it? Or do we just say at the end, chime in ours too? Or, do you know that, Tom?
Well, yeah. So I think if we're looking at, it's, it's two different parcels with one being under the control of the Select Board and one being under the control of the Conscom. So you would each have to make whatever regulations or rules for that parcel by vote of your board. So if the Conscom comes up with a policy for their land that you approve of, you could adopt it for your land.
Is there, is there a path forward where, you know, these docks are allowed under certain circumstances? It's not, we don't have to remove them. You're not saying we have to remove them, all the docks?
I'm not saying we have to do anything right now.
Okay.
I think we want to understand what our options are. I think removing all the docks is absolutely one of the options on the table. But leaving them in place, I think also an option, leaving them in place with only private access, I think you would find a lot of opposition to, but leaving them in place with public access, maybe. But you also, we're going to have to answer this question as well. There are motorboats on at least two of these docks that are on public land. And at least one other, and maybe two other boats that are tied up to these docks. So if we are to leave docks in place, we're going to have to answer a question of who's allowed to use that? When are they allowed to use that? How, this now becomes a scarce resource. How do we allocate that scarce resource? Really boring bureaucratic questions, but I think the ones that are important for doing this fairly.
So, you know, I, the email thread that we were on and some of the letters we got from residents, and I went back and watched the August 19th Conscom meeting. It felt like at that meeting, the sense was where everything's illegal, they have to be removed immediately, within the next two weeks. Town council has told us that. So now I'm hearing something very different from you. So what, where are, like, can you help me figure out where that divide is?
Yeah, I think what you heard on the 19th was somewhat reactionary, right? Like, to be honest, I'm not sure everyone was aware of the fact that that is Conservation Commission land. And I will tell you, in general, our approach to incursions on conservation land is fairly aggressive, right? So I think what you heard on the 19th was our typical reaction to, no, you can't build that on conservation land. You back off though, and you understand and think about the history of this and the understanding that this has gone on for, someone asked, I don't know how long, decades, right? That may not be the wisest approach.
Okay.
And so, going through a deliberate process to understand what the right answer is, I think you, that's what you also heard in the 19th. I think what you heard from the Conservation Commission is an appetite to take them out. And that may well be the outcome of this process. But I'm pulling that back a little bit and saying it's not the presumptive outcome.
Thank you.
Sorry. In addition to the docks, there's a lot of, there's trees and other invases and whatnot there. And the solution needs to be holistic to come up with who's going to, who's going to manage that property, what they're allowed to do, you know, and that too. So it's beyond just the docks, I believe, right?
I think that's absolutely right. That some of these areas are landscaped areas that are maintained, that are regularly mowed. Some of them are more overgrown. I think if we were solely managing this for the, let's say, the ecological outcome, we'd let the whole thing rewire it. But I would tell you that the Conservation Commission has two mandates, right? Like, one is conservation, but one is access to open space and recreation. And so, you see, you talked about boardwalks, right? That therein is the tension. I think we have the same tension here in that we, there's a lot of ecological value in trees hanging over the water, but also there's a lot of community value in being able to see your lake and access your lake. So we need to figure out the right path forward. Part of that is maintaining it, but I think it's, it is something that is solvable. There's not actually a ton of property here. And one of the things that we would like to do is engage with, with the Long Lake Neighborhood Association to understand where they're at in general and try and find a path forward.
So I think one of the threshold questions for us is, are we, do we want to be there every step of the way as they're working their way through this? Do we want to check in every now and then? Or do we want to in, fully just say, "Conservation, go ahead and look into this and come back to us, you know, let us know when you've figured out what you want to do." I don't see the last option as being very efficient or helpful personally.
I would be inclined to have Conscom run the public input sessions. And maybe we can consult with them after that when, when they have an idea of what they want to do.
Your Conscom, please, all night.
I don't remember.
Yes, I think so.
Oh, yeah, I am.
That's why I booked you on.
That's why I took you calling.
I mean, enjoy your company, too.
So I would be happy, I would be very happy to like, check up, to talk with Chase every time they, they have a meeting and coordinate with you all.
Yeah, and then maybe you can report back during updates and let us know how things went.
And if we have, you know, guidance that we want to give, then, then we can figure out a good method of doing that, whether it's at a Conscom meeting or an HADHOC committee or whatever.
To be honest, I think we'll learn a lot in the first sort of public hearing around this in terms of where people are at. And I say the first because I don't anticipate it will be the one that we're at the last.
All right.
I do think that when, when a decision is made, it needs to be another joint meeting so that we're all on board with, so that all the property is the same, but...
Yeah. I just, I, I think it's, it makes sense for them to be running the hearings. I just want to avoid the situation where they put in all the work and all the hours and they come up with something that works for them and they come to us and we're like, "No, mm-mm." You know, "That's, that's not so great for us. What about, you know?" So I just want to make sure that we've got...
We agree, which is why we're here now. Like, I want to get it on your radar. We owe the community a comp... It doesn't necessarily even mean both parcels need to be handled the same way, but it means we all need to agree that parcel A is going to be handled this way and parcel B is going to be handled that way.
Right. Yeah. So, all right.
While, while the process is playing out, do we need to do something with the private property signs, the gates, the things like that? Should we be doing something immediately on the things that we know are an issue?
Tom?
Yeah, thank you. It would make me much more comfortable if we removed those signs. And I say that because there's a concept in law called adverse possession. And adverse possession is when a party takes over someone else's party by acting openly, notoriously, and continuously for 20, 20 years. Now, typically, it's illegal to adversely possess municipal land. So we have some really good protections in place. Nonetheless, I don't like someone, kind of putting a sign up that says, "This is mine, not yours" on our land is being both open and notorious. So I'd like to nip that one in the bud.
Okay. So does that letter come, so we need to figure out who to send those letters to or post something in a short, in short order?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's no title search for this, so.
I'm fairly confident that we can sort that out.
Okay. We meaning you or Jim?
We, we meaning Tim and Lauren. But we meaning conservation, you don't need to bother you guys with it. My, my expectation is that I'll walk out of this meeting and I will have an agreement to have that removed probably before the night's up.
And, okay. So I think it would be a standard, like you would handle it like a regular enforcement, if you have to.
I don't, I don't even want to handle it like an enforcement. I would rather just understand that this is part of the next step in the evolution of how we manage this and deal with handjanks. And if it goes away without a letter, that would be ideal.
And Tom, that works for you? Or does it really kind of need to be a letter? Okay.
Yep. No, it's, it does, yeah. I'm, I'm fine with Chase's approach. I think it's, you know, it's very civic-oriented and I love that. And as long as it gets done, I don't care how it gets done.
I would also point out that we don't need anyone's permission to remove it.
That's correct.
Because that's our land.
Right. Okay.
There were a couple other issues that I had asked Tom to potentially be prepared to answer, and I think if it's okay with you, I'd like to run through them. Tim, Tom hit on the adverse possession, but I think there are also aspects of this. Tom, I had asked you to think about the, this sort of end of the paper road. My presumption, looking at the TV, Tom, hi. My presumption is that the Select Board controls that, but I think a little guidance from you there could be helpful to make sure we're going down the right path.
Right. So, so that would require a little title work, but likely it is not controlled by the Select Board. If it's a paper street, unless the land under the paper street was given to the town for the Select Board's control, it's still held in private ownership, but I believe that the public likely has a right of access to it.
Okay. So I would say with that answer, Tom, one of the things that we would ask the Select Board, Madam Chair, is if you could give us a leave to work with town council to try and run some of those things to ground.
Oh, yeah. Yep. Please do.
Tom, the other question was, how Long Lake as a Great Pond factors into this? Is there, are there any angles on this that are unique to it being a great pond that we need to pay attention to outside of the Chapter 91 licensing of docks?
Well, so, I, I think ultimately, not really, but let me just touch on what it, what it means to be a great pond. So a great pond means that the lake in its natural state is over 10 acres, and I believe Long Lake certainly meets that standard. If it's a great pond, it means that the water and the land under the water are technically owned by the state, and they're owned by the state for the purpose of providing the public with access to swimming and fishing and boating and kind of all the other fun things you can do on the water. So when someone builds a dock in the water above the low watermark, it's, it's, it's not really on our land, it's on the state's land. And the state allows that to happen with a Chapter 91 license. So I, in early on in your, in the discussion, you talked about working with some landowners to get them the Chapter 91 licenses that they need, and that's, that's exactly the right thing to do. The state is, you know, the state will absolutely work with people. These things happen all the time, but we want to get it right. And so, I think that's good. And, but I think additionally, if we decide to do docks off of the public land, then we want, we're going to want to get our own Chapter 91 license. So we'll want to be thinking about that going forward.
And, and there, Parks and Rec has a Chapter 91 license for their dock, right? So a process that we're familiar with.
So that, that would be an agreement between the municipality and the state?
Correct.
Okay. Interesting.
Tom, there's one other small angle on what you mentioned that I think also bears mentioning to the Select Board, and that is that there's at least one like play structure anchored out in the water. Another sort of bone of contention here in that my understanding is there have been complaints about kids playing on it who don't own it and being yelled at and being told not to access it. I think we would want to lump into this discussion the ability to moor things, recreational things on the lake bottom as sort of part of this general process.
Makes sense.
Tom, that, that is technically state land that it's moored on, is that right?
Yeah, if it's, if it's the, the water and the land under the water are state land, so it's theirs to control, we control it in some respects through the Conservation Commission because it would require wetlands permitting to do that. But again, they're, they're going to want to talk to the state about that. And again, the state doesn't do a lot of enforcement, but they do do some enforcement.
And to Tom's point, as we've worked with people who frankly, have had docks for a long time, helping them get up to speed with Chapter 91 licenses, the state has been very, very professional in recognizing that, yep, this has been here for a while, we're not going to take enforcement action for what was here, we're just going to get it up to speed and move forward.
So, Tom, just for clarity, if someone puts like a mooring ball out there, that's completely licensed different than a dock?
Not necessarily, no. It would still be a Chapter 91 license. So Chapter 91 licenses aren't just for docks, it's for, it's for anything that is affixed to the bottom of a great pond.
But do we, does the town have different controls then? Or, because, because that would just be on state property then, not on town property?
Right. So it's not, so we don't have an ownership interest, so we can't exercise any ownership rights over it. But we do have, the Conservation Commission does need to permit anything that happens in a wetland resource. And the, and it's a, Long Lake is a wetlands resource. So there's also that component of it that you need your, your Conservation Commission to permit.
Okay.
Anything else?
Nope.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. If anybody wanted to, if anybody saved their public input for now, they can go ahead. State your name and your address, please, at the mic.
My name's Tim Ahern, and I live on Three Lake View Drive. And I'd just like to put forward that there aren't any real villains in this story, that the people who abut the land are largely acting sort of as unofficial stewards. In the case of the Long Lake Neighborhood Association, they have annual cleanups of the lake, and they're making the access, you know, presentable and usable in front of their properties. Then there, I think it's rather complicated too, because at the end of the long streets coming off the hill, there's a different component where I think the neighborhood, you know, might share a dock there. It looks that way, and it's me. I don't know the actual story behind it. But this, so there seems to be multiple uses of the lake on that parcel of land we're under, under discussion. And I would just like to put forward the idea that, is there a possibility you could somehow deputize these people as stewards of the property in front of their, the land in front of their properties? Because that's basically what they're doing. I think to shut them all out would result in wilding, as I heard, which might mean beer cans and all the crap that we pull out of the lake every year. And with all these people who are invested in the quality of the lake, they might go, "Well, we were shut out, you know, so who cleans up, who cleans up the property near the beach?" It's the Long Lake Neighborhood Association that goes out there annually and does that. And that's just being good neighbors, you know? So I just want to put that forward, that I think there's a way that, you know, this idea of private property is, sounds inappropriate for that land because it isn't private. So just a coming together of the people involved and, you know, mapping out something that, you know, we're all winners. Because we all want the lake to look the best. And everybody's contributing to that now in their own little way. But I think, you know, issues have been raised here, like some people feel they're not getting the access they would like and whatever. I think these things can be worked out somehow.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jim Garrity. I live at 43 Lake Shore Drive on the, the property that was referenced on the earlier map. I would just like to first thank the Select Board and the Conservation Commission for the discussion that's been held this evening. Like Matthew, I read the minutes of the August meeting, and I did, they struck me also as reflecting a precipitous set of decisions that were calling for immediate dramatic action without much town participation. And Chase, just what you outlined, I was very pleased to hear. I thought it was exactly what we should have, which is a broad consultation of, as Tim said, people along the lake and others, and try to find a way that reflects the best interests of all, both the lake itself, which I think no one cherishes the lake more than we do, and all the people who use it in different ways. I read, I also had some exchanges with Tim Pearson, and I just yesterday learned about interests of all, both the lake itself, which I think no one cherishes the lake more than we do, and all the people who use it in different ways. I read, I also had some exchanges with Tim Pearson, and I just yesterday learned about the permitting policy that the commission had implemented last year, which struck me as a very appropriate policy. As I said in one of my emails, what I read there, again, this was all briefly, but I think I got it right, was that the policy exempted docks that had been in place for more than one year. Our dock, I think I can safely say, has been in place for more than 20 years, but we would happily go through the permitting process, and there was a, there was a comment about waiving the fees. I would happily pay the fees, and I think we should encourage fees along with the permitting process as a way to generate revenue to provide the kinds of things that Tim was talking about, town, lake cleanup and participation in ways that can actually make the lake better. I'll add one last comment, and I don't want to, I don't want to make this overly melodramatic, but in the many years, the 20 years that we've been on that lake and on that dock, we have on more than one occasion, two occasions, helped rescue capsized boats that were at the far end of the lake that I'm pretty confident would not have made it back to the town beach if they hadn't come to our dock. So, there are many uses for those docks, and I think we can find many creative solutions. And I don't think, I don't think there are that many people, you know, we live near the end of the lake, there are only a few more houses, there's only a few streets, so I don't think it's a massive problem. I think with some common sense thinking about shared use, public docks, I'm hopeful we can find a way that will work for all the residents and for the lake itself. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi there, Dustin Neild, 17 Lake Shore Drive, one of the dock owners. I'd like to fill in a couple of gaps. I'll save the myriad positive ways that the docks serve the community and serve the health of the lake for the future public hearings. But to answer some of the questions, I know for certain, many, nearly all of the docks have been there for 20 years or more. The one at my place was present when I moved in in 2004. Of course, it's been maintained and kept up over that time. I've welcomed every neighbor who's ever asked to use that dock, recognizing that it's public land, and have been very clear about that, so I think there might be some legitimate concerns about private property signs or things like that, but those are easily addressed. And I would like to ask a point of clarification, if we could, from Town Council, which is on the issue of potentially having moorings. If the Conservation Commission had to permit a mooring, would they be allowed to deny a permit just because they don't like the idea of moorings? Or they essentially have to permit it as long as the rules were followed, as if, as the rest of the permitting processes go?
Tom?
Could you tell me what you mean when you say mooring?
Say, a heavy anchor 50 feet offshore that someone keeps a boat on.
So, it's like a cinder block with a bottle on top that they use to connect their boat to?
I would say heavier and prettier than that, but sure.
Okay. So, there's two components there, right? So, there's the wetlands component where, you know, with the Wetlands Protection Act, where you're placing something on a wetlands resource, so they would need to permit that component of it, although they could also waive it if it's, if they consider it de minimis. And then there is the component that it's, again, it's state land, so you need the state's permission to put that on their land. In the case of a mooring, they might be willing to delegate that authority to the town, but I don't think they've done that yet.
Thanks, I'm just trying to get if it's a hurdle that's achievable, or if it's a hurdle that if the board, or if the commission or the board decided, like, just to not allow moorings, if they could, if it's, you know, technically allowed but not achievable, that would be a concern. But I think there's better, I think there's better solutions than that, no matter what.
You're probably right, but I would say, they can't, they can't deny it because they would need a wetlands reason to deny it because they don't own the land. So, they'd only be acting under their, their role as enforcers of the Wetlands Protection Act.
Understood, thank you. Lastly, just sort of a point of context that Jim sort of referred to and goes along with Tim's idea, which is most of these docks, to my understanding, and it's really been word of mouth through the years, is that at one point in the 90s or perhaps very early 2000s, that the town literally told the landowners across the street, if you steward the land, then we will tolerate or allow you to have a dock. It was always, of course, not technically permitted by the permitting process, and I think most of us there have lived up to that in various forms. So, if there is a way to steward the land, a little guidance about what the best way to do that is, because we definitely have some land that's sort of heavily landscaped, some that's not at all, and if it was rewilded, we see parts of the lake where that, you know, comes all the way back to the street, and people can't access it because it's poison ivy knee-high, right? And other parts where, you know, I put Lake Shore Drive up against anywhere in town for the number of walkers every day, and they're there because they enjoy being able to walk along the shoreline of the lake and enjoy the view across the way, because we have a beautiful, unimpeachable resource across the way. It's really fortunate that we have a lake with no houses and all conservation land on the other side, and being able to access that from various parts of the neighborhood is not just convenient, but it gives people more time to put into conservation and relaxation, not just having a dock for the sake of a dock. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rob Brown, 25 Juniper Road. I didn't think we were going to be talking tonight, so I didn't come prepared. I'm very heartened by what I heard tonight. Like you, Matthew, I listened in on that August meeting, I listened to three meetings. Tonight is nothing like those three meetings, nothing even close. It was enough for me to challenge you, the Select Board, with regard to, if you listen to those meetings, will you come away as I am? Unfortunately, I appreciate the volunteers on ConsCom. I think they do a great job. But the rhetoric around this issue has been really alarming. There's, I'll paraphrase, why don't we get the public hearing and just put it in one of our regular time slots so we can contain it within 15 minutes? That's not the spirit that I hear tonight, and that's not the spirit that I hope this goes forward. I would say that some members spoken on record are quite outrageous with regard to the inconsistency with what I hear, is the reasonableness expressed tonight, and I, I just felt that I had to get that out, because it wasn't one meeting, it wasn't two meetings, it was three meetings. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Andrea Kern, Middlesex Drive. I'm in the lake neighborhood, but not as much as some of these guys. I guess, as far as the docks, I mean, you talked about the shoreline being degraded. I think it would be less degraded if there were docks. I mean, there's somebody who's parking some big pontoon boat there, and I, and I see it breaking down the reeds there and stuff like that, so I think the docks would be preferable to that. And like Dustin said, it's, it's really, it's the only lake in town that everybody can go to, you know? You can't walk around Speck Pond, you can't walk around Manawannaki, you can't, I mean, Long Lake is, I mean, it's got all that great conservation land, and, and this is really the only place people can put boats in, and I know there's a boat dock, you know, a boat launch, but I don't know. It just seems more welcoming, and I, I agree, people really are keeping it up. I mean, they're mowing the lawns and they're, you know, it looks great. I think years ago, it was not maintained, you know, I mean, I'm talking years ago. I've lived in town for, like, really a long time, 50, more, 60 years, and it was sort of the Wild West there. And I think people are really being responsible now about it, and I think they will continue to be responsible.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Any closing remarks? Are you good?
All set.
All set? All right. Thank you, Chase, appreciate it. Let's talk office hours.
Madam Chair, I'll sign off now, if you don't need me?
Yes.
Yeah, thanks, Tom, appreciate it.
Okay, good to see you all.
Likewise, thanks, Tom. All right, let's talk office hours.
So, I think we wanted to say, we wanted to try some different time slots and different days, instead of doing it always on Friday.
Right.
So, what times, I don't know, I'm open to suggestions, weekends, daytime?
Yeah, I'll preface, Gary did get in touch with me and say that he would like to participate.
Okay, great.
So, and he was fine with, I think weekday.
Weekday nights or during the day?
I think he said during the day.
Okay.
For him. But I think he was fine with everybody setting their own hours if they wanted to, you know, like, so I guess that's one threshold question, is do we want to have standard, you know, the same hours every week? Do we want to mix it up so that if somebody can't come on Wednesday afternoons, they can maybe catch us the next week on a Thursday afternoon or two weeks later? I think that was one of the problems with the Friday afternoon thing, is that if you can't make Friday afternoons one week, you might, you know, it's a good chance you're not going to be able to make it, you know, two weeks later or two weeks after that either.
Yeah.
So, my thought was that we try to work out a schedule where we each take one week out of the month, every, every month, and then set whatever time works best for us within that week.
I think that's probably a great way to go, and as we do it, we'll figure out what times are populated and what aren't.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, we'll just do a one-week rotation, the four of us? Like, we each take a week, and then we start over?
So that we're each taking, doing once a month, each of us?
Roughly, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it'll, a couple extras, but, yeah.
Mark, what do you think?
I think that's fine, and then, okay.
Okay, good. Yeah, let's do that.
All right.
So, one of us should email Lisa.
Yeah.
And set up a, set up the document that we can put our names in and the times we're going to, the times we're going to, the time slots we're going to take.
Mm-hmm.
Because we probably don't want to have someone do Sunday afternoon and then the next person do Monday morning, right?
Right, probably not, although.
You never know.
You never know. We also sometimes, you know, there's people that want to talk to one of us and not another one of us too, so.
That's true.
Do either of you use your Outlook calendars at all?
No.
Okay, so, so a shared calendar would not be helpful to you?
I mean, I guess I could, it's just a matter of me remembering to look at it for one thing, so I don't typically use the.
You can import it in your Google Calendar.
I don't, I already have six calendars imported into my Google.
I can beat that.
I mean, I like the shared spreadsheet.
Okay.
But I guess, I guess if I, no, I mean, if the calendar, it makes sense to have to schedule things on a calendar, right? If we're doing it once a week, so it's probably, probably the way to go.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, I'll talk to Lisa about setting up a, a shared calendar.
Okay.
For office hours, and we'll see.
Okay.
How that works out.
So, there's effectively three weeks, well, three or four weeks left in this month, depending on you, do we just want to pick a couple to get started?
Yeah.
Let me pull up my multiple calendars.
I am not going to be able to do it this week. But next week, the fif, week of the 15th, I could probably do.
Okay, week of the 15th is terrible for me, so.
Okay, so why don't I do the week of the 15th? And I'll pick a time.
Mark, do you have a preference between the week of the 22nd or the week of the 29th?
Both of those weeks are okay now, this week is not.
Yeah, me neither. So, I think we need to let this week go, unless Gary can take it. So, do you have a preference between 22nd and 29th?
Nope.
All right.
Whatever works for you.
I'll take the 29th.
Okay.
Oh, no, I will take the 22nd, please.
So, I'll take the week of the 29th?
Yeah, 15th, 22nd, 29th, and I'll let Gary know that that's what we've got worked out so far. Let's see if he wants to fill in this week or after that.
And then what we should do going forward is get our times set in time so that they're in the newsletter when it's published, so that.
Yes, good idea, newsletter, and it'll go on the website as well.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay.
Someone will have to remind me of the deadline for the newsletter.
It's the 15th for the first.
Okay.
For the publication on the first.
Okay. So, we could get our October dates in, basically?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yes, we can get our October dates in.
So, we should start a calendar and then an email thread with Gary, and we'll figure out October?
Yes.
Okay.
Who's my backup on remembering that?
As Vice Chair, I will do that.
Thank you. All right, move on to policy discussion regarding use of the common and the flag and flagpole on the common. I would, I'm going to kick it off by saying, I don't want to, I would rather we didn't vote without two of our members present, so, but I'm happy to continue the discussion.
So, you'd rather not vote on the use of the common or the flagpole policy, or both? The flagpole policy is pretty simple, it's just adding the POW.
Yeah, the flagpole policy is pretty straightforward, and I think I'm fine with that. It's the common that I think is more substantive in terms of.
Yeah.
But POW is already there, it's not adding the POW, it's adding the Purple Heart.
Oh, the Purple Heart, sorry, yes, you're right.
Okay.
Good call, thank you.
Yeah. My, so, my comments on the use of the common are, I don't know, there's item number six which says applicants for the use of the common may be required to submit proof of liability insurance. We should, that needs to be clear defined on who is required and who's not, right? It should also follow whatever policy, like, Park and Rec must have a policy for the use of Fay Park, right? And this, we have multiple parcels in town that have some kind of agreement like this. They should all follow more or less the same, the same policy, right? I don't know what the policy is for Fay Park, if they have that in there, or what, if they have these same conditions too. We should figure out unifying them. I'm not sure, yeah, and the insurance, I'm not sure on. The other comment I would have is, this is another one of those things that I think we should end up delegating to the town administrator, that he can approve them, but he can't deny them, kind of like we did with the One Day Liquor licenses, right? We don't need to approve the use of these things if everyone else signed off at our meetings, unless there's an exception, that he doesn't think it's fit, or something, right? So, those are my two comments.
How do you think we should solve the, rationalizing the policy on the use of the parks and commons and stuff? Like, you know?
I'll look at, Saul? Saul?
Yeah, I mean, we certainly can take a look at the policies. I guess my, my question, and I don't, no, I don't necessarily want to take over, but, you know, why do we have different control of different parks? I mean, yeah, if you're in King Street, obviously there's recreation, Fay Park is much more a green space, more in common with the common, I would say, than some other other spaces.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't know what we're doing next, I guess.
So, I, I've got to say, I don't think we need this at all. I'm pretty not okay with it.
With any, any policy?
At best, I think it should be with an expectation of 100 or more people. I don't, the common, I think, is, is different in that it's historic, historically the place where free speech happens. I think a, requiring a permit is much too close to prior restraint for me to be comfortable with it. I don't think people should need a permit to walk onto the common with some signs, as long as they're not impeding traffic or causing some other disturbance. So, I would, I would say that if, if we want to do this, I think it should only apply when there's an expectation of 100 or more.
So, I both agree and disagree with you on this, because there are events like the Country Gardeners that go out there and. and, and set up shop there, right? Those should have to get permission, but, um, but the people that are doing, you know, going out and holding signs, I agree with you on, right?
Well, that falls under the hundred or more, right?
No.
I mean, there's easily a hundred people at those.
At the country, at the gardeners, there might be a hundred, but it's, would be, if you counted everyone that was there over the course of the day, there's not be a hundred at a time.
Why are the none of the plants that walk there at like eight o'clock in the morning? How is, that math isn't mathing.
Yeah, the, the real difference there, though, is setting up all the, setting up all the tests, right?
Right, and that's, that's why the permit was required, right, is 'cause they start the night before.
Right, but, but you, but that means you have to have something that has a permit for the common for that type of event. You don't need to necessarily have it for the other type of events, right? That's-
'Cause I think, I think our policy generally is for events when somebody wants to reserve the space for their activity, whether it's the, the road race or, um, weddings or other things there, that sort of, if you wanna sort of lay claim to that space for a period of time, then we ask you to get a permit. If you just wanna show up and toss a ball or do whatever, then you have a time there. My music.
So if it either be like a, I mean, so I could be too, if I'm purchasing it, it could be, um, if you want to sell something on the common, you need a license, um, or, excuse me, a permit, and/or if you, um, are intending to use the common overnight, I think that's, that is also a reason to need a permit, you know, if you're wanting to use the, um, the common outside of dusk to dawn. No, inside of dusk to dawn, then, um, then you need a permit.
I agree with you on, I agree with you a hundred percent on the free speech, and I, I think we should carve that out as no permit is required. And set up, I don't know exactly what the guidelines are, but I feel like we've already identified a few that are pretty common sense things. If you're gonna put a structure up, you know, if you're gonna use it after dark, or if you're gonna reserve it with, so that other people can't use it, all those are great criteria for a permit. And that might be enough, those three might be enough.
Structure, dark, and selling something?
Oh, and selling something, yeah.
And what was there?
Oh, well, that, well, reserving the space, but I think, I think tho-
Reserving the space, yeah.
I think selling something is better.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, yeah.
There's always gonna be gray area, right? There's always gonna be like borderline cases that we can't figure out here.
Right.
Um, we just need a sensible approach to try to, so that when someone says, "Do I need a permit for this?", we can say, "Are you doing one of these three things? Yes, you need a permit, or no, you don't."
What does a structure mean, though? I mean, like, when Rotary has, you know, that, when the Rotary does the tree lighting, for example, they've never come asking for permit, right? But they set up a podium and set up tables, right? What counts?
And it's after dark.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think they would need a permit.
You know, I-
And there's more than a hundred people.
I think, I think the DPW is worried when people start driving stakes into the ground. So that might be a good way to, to determine whether or not you need a permit, or if that's a structure. So, again, I mean, I think we could probably work out these.
Yeah.
We could work them out.
Yeah, 'cause you don't wanna catch, um, a temporary flagpole that, you know, that the Indian American Association had, you know, for their ceremony the other-
Yeah.
The other week, and they put the flag up and it was up for, you know, a solid five, ten minutes, and then they put the flag down and, um, I, you know, I don't wanna burden people needlessly. So, yeah, the stakes thing makes sense.
Do you have any comments?
Are you, are you, is that a tipping point of your, so you're, you're permitting people to put stakes in, stakes in the ground?
No.
No.
Okay. Okay, I thought that was, that would require a permit if you did that, if you wanted that.
Well, yeah, that's a good point. If we're not gonna give the permission anyway, then how is it, how is that the threshold?
We have, I mean, we have to define what a structure is, I guess. And I don't know if we can do that right now, tonight.
Yeah.
But it seems like we should be able to work it out, but I don't know who does it. And who, who like rationalizes the new policy with the old one and make sure the language is right. I mean, I know we're gonna have council looking at it at the end, but someone has to actually, like, write the, the meat of it to begin with. So, I don't know.
So, I'll work on a draft or something based on what we've talked about.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I would think structure, anything that's gonna be stood on.
Anything that's erected.
Structure, right?
Anything that's erected, like, anything. Could be a tent, could be a temp-, you know, could be a lemonade stand or anything like that. Any, you know, anything like that, that's, that's, um, on, on, on there.
Is there chairs? Folding chairs?
No.
Right. Take a crack at it. Structure has to be defined somewhere in somebody else's policy.
Um, do we wanna vote on the flags?
I'm fine with voting on the flag policy.
Just to add the, the, add the Purple Heart?
Yeah, I'm okay with voting on the flags.
Do we have a motion for it?
Uh, I don't think so. Um...
Or we can wait until, until everyone's here?
I can make it up.
Okay.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we update the flag policy to include the Purple Heart flag as an allowed flag on Tom property.
Second.
Moved by Mark, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor?
Aye. Yay, we did it.
Okay. Mr. Administrator?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. So there is, uh, there is, there's two requests for the select board to vote on tonight, the first of which is an intermunicipal agreement, um, as a reas-, uh, with, as you, from my memory, as you can, as you, as you, as you know, Littleton Police Department has been participating in the Community Outreach Initiative Network Program through the Department of Mental Health. And it is, there was, eh, and, uh, it was a, a company that, uh, was, uh, so, that offered the, the services to be able to, to deal with the mental health issues that various communities around here, uh, police departments. And, um, unfortunately, that, uh, the police departments were not pleased with their performance. And as such, what they did is they took the initiative and they, that the police chiefs did in the areas, in the area, and, uh, took control of it. And, uh, as you, as my memo it reads, it's, uh, it's a fully gr- it's fully grant-funded municipal employees, uh, gonna be led by Air Police, by the, by the Town of Air, the police chief, uh, Chief Gill, and the town manager, Poitran, uh, will take the administration of the grant, and with the support of DMH. And, uh, it is, uh, in order to be able to be, continue to be included in that, it is requested that this IMA be, uh, be signed. And before you, this has been vetted through town council. Changes have, uh, some, some suggestions. They have been, uh, included, uh, within the IMA. And, uh, so it is up to you whether you, uh, the chairwoman can sign it, or if you wanna delegate me to sign it, however you would like to do.
So it's a one-year, um, term that's subject to renewal. Termination requires six months' notice.
Yes.
What are the provisions for, is there any clawback if we were to, um, if we were to terminate? Is there any way for us to, to, um, get back a proportion of the grant money that we put in?
Um, it's a, it's more of a regional thing?
So there's no, it's not?
So, so basically Advocates was supplying all the personnel, and now Air Police Chief and Town Administrator are going to administer the funds and hire personnel? Or are they using in-house people in Air, or?
No, the, it's, uh, higher person, because a lot of the personnel left.
Okay.
The, the vendor.
Okay.
And the, the, the co-clinician that the town was, the services that was being utilized, Susan in Air, uh, will continue to work with-
I see, okay, alright, I got it, okay. So basically, they're just taking over administration of the personnel and, okay.
Correct. And D, uh, DMH recognizes, uh, what the towns are doing and supporting.
Okay, good.
So I generally don't have a problem with the agreement. There's a couple things. So the hundred and eighty days is an awfully long time for the cancellation, because they're gonna let us know December thirty-first what our budget is for the next year, which means we don't even have time before the fiscal year starts to cancel it before it kicks in, right?
Yes.
It's too long of a cancellation period when we don't know what we're actually on the hook for.
I thought I read in there, unless mutually agree, did I not, did I, did I confuse that with something else? I thought I, unless it was mutually agreed, um... I mean, it is, uh, the, 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 the issue also that we have here, if I'm, I'm mistaking, confusing with something else, but the issue is we have, as you can see, we've got multiple other towns, it's not just us and them. I mean, everybody's in the same boat. Um, and I believe it is, uh, has been, for the most part, universally accepted.
Where is it? About December thirty-first?
In, um, it's, uh, in, on page three of the agreement on item six, it says, "Air shall prepare an annual fiscal year budget, um, Air shall provide said budget to the town sooner or later than December thirty-first, preceding the fiscal year which the budget pertains." So, if-
But isn't that, but do, since our fiscal year starts in July, doesn't that mean we have six months to, to review their, their budget before our fiscal year starts?
Right, but that means that if they provide it on December thirty-first, your six months takes you to your beginning of your fiscal year. You're already going to be paying for some of it in the next fiscal year if you have to, before you even had a chance to say no, right?
I thought if they gave us a December thirty-first of this year, we would be looking at fiscal twenty-seven.
Right.
Which would start six months later.
Right, but you, the hundred and eighty days is six months, so by the time they told you what the budget is, you're already into the next fiscal year before you could get out of it, right?
By at least a day, by a minimum of a day.
Right.
Or a few hours, maximum, who knows?
No.
I don't, I don't-
It's June thirtieth, falls on June thirtieth.
Which would be a, roughly a hundred and eighty days after December thirtieth, first, right?
Yes, sir.
So by the time you got around to looking at the budget numbers, when we had our normal budget sessions, it would be too late to say, "We can't afford this", without already incurring cost.
I think, um, I mean, the intent is that it's all paid for through grant funding. So the, I think the question more is how the grant cycle lines up with the termination clause. If we, if we find out we, you know, the grant didn't come through, then I think everybody's gonna wanna continue, right? Then if it, if we don't get the grant money, none of the towns are gonna wanna participate.
Correct, there's no obligation.
So, as long as the grant, finding out about the grant doesn't, um, come so late that we are already committed to expenses, we should be fine.
I mean, is there any obligation? I mean, in order for us to spend money on this, I would assume we had, has to be in the budget and there's to have to be a town meeting vote. So how could we possibly be on the hook for money?
We're not.
Yeah. So I don't, so, so I don't know what you're worried about.
But we are, if we can't get out of this agreement, if this agreement commits us to money that we're not allowed to spend, that's the-
So I guess I'm saying, like, does this, this-
It's also kind of, under duration, it says it lasts for a year, so I don't understand what happens after a year either.
It can be renewed, it says.
Unless it's extended by a vote of the town. So if we don't vote to extend it, what does the hundred and eighty days really mean? Uh, it's, it's just, there's statements that are kinda contradictory to each other, that I don't understand which one wins.
There were a couple there that town council had, uh, had corrected, contradictory, uh, statements, to your point. Well, if you wanna, um, continue it, I can, I can have a deeper conversation.
I don't know, I mean, how other, I mean, it just, I don't know how others feel about it, I-
I'm just looking for any place where it says that we are-
I don't see us on the hook, right? It says... Costs and expenses incurred by Air are the sole responsibility of Air, unless otherwise so stated. Understood that Air is entitled for reimbursement through the State, um, Department of Mental Health, the grant, basically.
At the end of paragraph six, it says, "It is the intent of Air that all costs, fees, and expenses to be incurred will be eligible for reimbursement through grant funding. It is the intent", but no, but it does not say that it is the case that all costs will always be covered by grant funding. So I'm not sure what to, I'm not sure how to read that, and I, I'm, I think that's a question for town council.
Okay.
I, I guess I would, I, I, I think I see what Mark is getting at, like, is there a world in which we are on the hook for expenses here, um, based on the language of this agreement?
I don't see anything that says we have to pay it, though.
Each town shall bear its own cost, fees, and expenses related to the enforcement of this IMA.
Mm-hmm. That's lawyers. That's our time with Tom. I mean, I only see costs, cost reimbursement tied to the grant. I don't see it tied to the towns.
I mean, the scope of services says the Town of Air will use the grant money to fund and enhance the Community Outreach Initiative Network. So there's no, yeah, I, I guess, I don't know for sure, but I don't see any place where it says we are on the hook for, for paying for any of the services. We're only on the hook for paying for, um, what, what was it? The, our legal time, and even the administration of the grant, Air will bear all the costs of that and get reimbursed. So I would be, I mean, I'm, I would be okay signing, I would be okay voting to sign this, I think. But if you are concerned, or the language isn't clear enough, we can ask council to give us an opinion.
I mean, council, council gave us an opinion, right?
Yeah, council reviewed this, made a couple changes that were contradictory in, in other areas, and, um, offered no other concerns.
So the concerns that they noted are those incorporated into what we, into what's in our packet?
Yes.
So we can either, um, Mark, if you'd like, we can vote to authorize Jim to sign it once he's run it through council, or once-
I would be okay with that, if we get a determination. Just get council to weigh in on some of the questions.
Okay.
And then-
Once council confirms that we don't- Once council confirms that we don't need to go through town meeting?
Yeah.
Or just that we're not?
For anything related to the agreement, right? 'Cause otherwise it doesn't, it doesn't much matter.
I would say that we're not obligated to spend any money apart from, you know, the time, that basically paying for council to review the agreement.
Correct.
I, that's what I, you know?
Okay.
That's what I would know.
So let's, yeah, so...
So, let's, let's vote.
Let's authorize Jim to do that, to Jim to sign once, once that's clarified.
Yeah, okay.
So I'll bring it, and I'll also ask, I'll also ask town council what the hundred and eighty, hundred and eighty days comes for.
So I'll move that we vote to authorize, uh, the town admin, town administrator to sign it pending comments from, uh, town council.
Second.
Moved by Mark, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Here we have, uh... Okay, so here we have, uh, on the second item, and I don't know how to pronounce that second word, the Boston?
Athenaeum?
Athenaeum.
Um, proprietor share. As we were notified that, uh, one of the oldest, nation's oldest libraries, and the select board holds one share, and they, and you must designate an official representative among the staff. The previous representative was Ms. Laura Zalins-Zalowsky of the library in 2012. And it is a share that was purchased by George Shattuck of Boston in 1854.
So it says in here that the value has changed and that the value is zero.
Yes.
I wish I knew what it was before it changed. But I do notice elsewhere that you can buy a share if you want for $5,000. It says that later on, but I'm in favor of holding on to this valuable asset.
So I can give a little bit more information on this from the library trustees days, that the Boston Athenaeum is one of the oldest private libraries in the country, it's right downtown, it's, uh, we, the trustees toured it with Marnie back in probably 2008, we went into a tea that they had, um, they have, you can buy like one day memberships too and go in and events, it's, um, it's really amazing to go in and see it. I was wondering whatever happened to this share. Um, I know at one point the Athenaeum was trying to claw these shares back, and we fought hard to keep this share. We were like one of two libraries in the Commonwealth, or two towns that actually have one of these shares. They tried to, they tried to buy them all back, and we refused to sell ours, so this is a great resource for the town, I wish we used it more. I would suggest the select board go in, if we give this to Mr. Alvarez, go and say, "When are you taking us?", because it's, it is a really cool thing to go and see.
So if we have, since we have the share, we can get in without paying for the one day?
Can anyone from town get in?
I'm not entirely sure of that, I'd have to read this in a little more careful detail, but, um...
I'm just curious if it's one of the, you know, 'cause the library has the day passes, I'm wondering if it's...
I don't think you, I don't think it works that way, but I'm not 100% positive, so...
Is it like an invite-only library, sort of?
Yes.
Okay.
Wow.
It's very, very cool to go into.
And are we designating Sam as the, as the, as the holder?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Yes.
Okay, great.
I'll take a motion.
I'll move the select board to vote to approve the Boston Athenaeum proprietary, proprietor's share transferred to Sam Alvarez, library director.
Second.
Moved by Mark, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's cool. Now I wanna go.
Yeah, thanks for the background info. Any, um, comments about minutes? I gave it a cursory glance, but I wasn't here, so...
I only...
I was not at one of these.
The only one that's listed is August 11th, right? I know there's one about that. June 10th. That was the Zoom meeting?
Oh, yes, okay.
Ready for a motion, or?
Yeah.
Move the select board vote to approve the meeting minutes from the select board meetings on June 10th, 2025, and August 11th, 2025.
Second.
Moved by Mark, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moved, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moved by Mark, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone, and thank you, Littleton. That's it.